We'll call this meeting to order this afternoon and let the record show that all board members along with our superintendent and board attorney is present. Would you please stand for prayer, Ms. Donnell, and then the pledge of allegiance?
Father God, we just thank you, Lord. We just truly thank you for your grace, Father God, and we thank you for your mercy. Father God, we thank you for this meeting tonight, Lord Jesus, Father God, where you have allowed us to come together to do the business of the board, Lord Jesus. Father God, we thank you, Lord Jesus, Father God, for this your presence, Lord Jesus, and I ask, Father God, for a spirit of wisdom. Lord, Father God, I ask for a spirit of understanding, Lord Jesus. Father God, I ask that you allow us all to be quick to listen, slow to speak, and slow to anger, Lord. I ask, Father God, that as we're here to do the business and as you are joining us all here, Lord Jesus, Father God, I ask that as we have community members' presence, as we have teachers, as we have parents, as we even have students, Lord Jesus, Father God, and other keep stay hocus, Lord Jesus, I ask that you allow there be a oneness and a unity amongst us, Lord Jesus. I ask that we would do that which you have all have called us here to do, Lord Jesus. I ask, Father God, your mercy upon each and every individual that is present. I ask, Lord Jesus, Father God, that you will be a wall of fire around us in the glory in the midst of us, Lord Jesus. Do that which only you can do, Father God, Lord Jesus. Allow us, Lord Jesus, Father God, to just, Lord Jesus, just have, just, just your love presence, Father God, in the name of Jesus that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing this evening is the adoption of the agenda.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion. Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. The approval of our minutes of December the nineteenth, regular school board meeting and a public hearing in the executive session.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Agler makes that motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Mathis seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. All right, this brings us down to the items of interest of the public and certainly, as we see here this evening, there's a lot of interest. And so, but this is a moment in time for us to hear from the public. We just ask you to refrain from any remarks concerning someone or issues that might be appropriate to talk to the superintendent about. Also, we need to try to limit, you know, your, your speech tonight, if you have, your response to no more than three minutes, okay? So is there anyone this evening that would like to address the board? Yes, ma'am?
I'll start off. Most of you know me, my name's Charlotte Ellison. I'm secretary with the Non-Instructional Association. Most of the audience is teachers, and I want you to know I stand with you. I represent a group of hard-working individuals. They are employees that often get overlooked in the district but are very essential. Most students start their day greeted by a bus driver when they're picked up in the mornings. Some are attended by a bus aide on the way to school. They pass crossing guards who are there to keep our students safe en route to the schools. Along with instructional staff are often front office staff and teachers aides greeted at the students when they exit the bus in the mornings. Some students proceed to be greeted and fed by food service staff with teachers aides and custodial staff in attendance as well. Then it's off to the classrooms where our hard-working teachers and teachers aides work together to educate our students. During this time, our non-instructional school site staff along with administrators are behind the scenes helping to keep our schools running smoothly. From the maintenance staff, bus drivers, bus aides, teachers aides, ground maintenance, crossing guards, office managers, receptionists, secretaries, custodians, food service workers, clinic aides, data entry staff, technology staff, finance accounts payable, and payroll clerks, and other non-instructional staff that I might have inadvertently left off this list. In other words, it takes a team of hard workers behind the scenes to serve our students and help keep things running smoothly in our district. We feel that we deserve to receive salary increases and not continue to be paid fifteen dollars an hour every year for twelve to fifteen years, depending on where you are on our step level, with no salary increase. We may be mostly behind the scenes and quietly doing our jobs but are now stepping out and speaking up so we can be heard. Our non-instructional staff deserve salary increases. We deserve better.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Donna Faircloth, and I'm the president of the Non-Instructional Union. Inflation rate in Florida in 2023 was approximately eight percent, while most non-instructional salary schedules in the district increased was less than that. There is no difference in pay, difference in pay on jobs that require more training and skills to perform, while an employee gets more certification and skills, the same amount that someone, that the job requires less training and certification. A head custodian makes the same as a regular custodian even though he has the same, more responsibilities, and he has to work for fourteen years before he sees that increase to be able to surpass the other custodian. Food service managers make fifteen an hour, and while the assistant managers make the same and work thirteen years before seeing an increase. Even with the step levels being automatic, there is no increase in pay for non-instructional employees since most work at least ten years and some may be as long as fifteen before they ever see an increase in their salaries. Forty percent of non-instructional employees received less than a dollar an hour increase last year, quite a bit less than the inflation rate and the cost of living that these employees and their families see in their paychecks. While our topped-out people have not seen nothing for several years, and then we've got their, they have their insurance cost and their adjustment costs as to where if you've been on the top of the salary schedule for five years, your pay has literally went backwards. These are some of the issues with the salary schedule that need to be addressed. We know moving forward salary, moving, that y'all moving the salary was not necessary for the board, and we appreciate that you did move it sooner than you had to. Please take care of your employees, and when you make commitment to take care of your employees, your employees morals increase, your productivity increases, along with everything else. We often hear you say you want to do what's right for your students and your constituents. If you treat your employees correctly and do what is right to make better employees for those students, and as far as the constituents, you've got to remember we're constituents too.
Okay, thank you.
I am Kathy Kreidler, and I work at TCES, and I'm also a member of the union. I was asked by a friend to read this important message. This injustice impacts myself and many others on a moral level and needs to be heard. Last year, 2223, when the MOU was signed for TCES due to the school grade and BSI coming in, the union had negotiated with the district to have seven third-grade teachers compensated, like their peers in fourth and fifth, that were getting compensated by the state since third does not receive a VAM. It was a lengthy process to negotiate and come to a fair agreement. The school board and the superintendent agreed with this negotiation. This year, fourth and fifth grade teachers are once again getting compensated using the same criteria, a three-year aggregate VAM. The union has tried since October to negotiate for third-grade teachers, which is now only four teachers versus the seven last year due to retirees and people leaving the district. The union once again offered a fair agreement, which has been rejected by our district. They are stating that third-grade teachers do not receive a VAM, and while this is true, it was negotiated last year to ensure equitable compensation for teachers at the same work site. While the district has rejected compensating these four third-grade teachers that contributed to TCES raising their score from a D to one point below a B, the state has added six additional names to the list of teachers to be compensated this year that were not even employed at the school last year. They are being compensated, rightly so, because they came to a struggling school with the previous VAM. How is this fair to those four effective, highly effective, third-grade teachers? How can you tell them that the work they did to help raise our school grade means nothing? What would our school grade have been without those four third-grade teachers? If you are one of these four third-grade teachers, please stand up and raise your hand if you're here. I'd like you to tell them to their face that they are not worthy of the same compensation as their peers this year. Thank you. And I'd also like to say on a side note that the situation that happened Wednesday, while unfortunate, I would like to just myself personally give a big round of applause because being in there and a runner, the heroes of Wednesday were the teachers in this room and the students. Not one time did I hear a teacher raise a harsh word or speak with stress in their voice, and I was all over that church. So I would like to say, I was so impressed to be a part of your community. I felt honored to be one of you, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Becky Hornsby. I teach at Taylor County Elementary School. As board members, your job is to represent the people of Taylor County, the community. Somewhere along the way, I think you have forgotten, the teachers are also part of the community, so you represent us as well. We are your constituents. We vote too. This is us showing up and showing you that we want you to be our voice. We are just asking to be fairly compensated for the many jobs we do. Let's talk about the many things teachers do daily. Teachers do so much more than just write lesson plans and teach our students. We analyze data, grade papers, and put that into focus. Then we use the data that we found to find resources to help differentiate our daily lessons to help every student be successful. We find or develop centers that help reinforce the standards we teach. This means we spend our own time and money printing things, laminating them, cutting them out, and then must find the time to teach the student how to do that center. We research and learn more effective ways to teach our students how to collaborate with each other for better achievement. We hold parent conferences. Many of us spend time cleaning our own rooms when the custodians are out. We hold parent conferences. Many of us spend time cleaning, wait, I'm sorry. Most of the jobs are done on our own time. We are just asking to be fairly compensated for the many jobs that we do and for all teachers to receive a raise in pay, not just those at the base pay. Not only do the veteran teachers teach our students, but we mentor and collaborate with new teachers and guest teachers to help shape and guide them as well. Again, on our own time and without compensation for many of us, our many years of dedication to the district should be more valuable to you. Many districts surrounding our community pay quite a bit more than our district, yet the veteran teachers who are still here have stayed dedicated to Taylor County schools, and this is the thank you we get? We knew we were not going to become rich being a teacher and that we are in this for the students, not the pay. However, there comes a time when money matters too. You want us to get paid the same thing new teachers get paid? Our years of experience should be worth more to you. The offer from the district does not show that veteran teachers are valued. We have brought four different proposals to the bargaining table, asking for raises to be fair, and you have denied all four just to go back to your original proposal. This is not acceptable.
All right, thank you.
My name is Yanelys Fernandez. I am a parent to Yanely. First of all, thank you to all the teachers because you guys handled that event miraculously. I come from a city who has emergencies all the time. Luckily, we're blessed that we don't have that here. However, it's obvious that the emergency plan that we have in place needs to be updated. Obviously, we don't need to know what that is, but it needs to be updated. I brought, I got brought the wrong kid three times. I ran out of work because a stranger called me at work. I was at my job when somebody called me, and I panicked. I didn't know what was going on. I didn't know what happened. I get phone calls for everything. If schools close, if there's teacher planning day, but when it counted, I didn't get it. And we need to change that. These people need to get paid more money because I wouldn't go work there because I can make more at a bank and not know how to do anything. You can teach people how to cut money. You can't teach people to do what they do every day for the pay that they do. So not only do they need to get paid better, but they need to get training and they need the resources that they need to help our children. In the event of a real bomb threat, all of the teachers, all of the parents, most of the police officers in town, we're in one area. That makes no sense. Don't put a target on our back and don't put a target on their backs when they take care of our children when I'm at work all day. They're with my child more than I am, and I couldn't find my kid. I was freaking out. So I would love to know when you guys are going to start making changes to those plans because I've heard from other individuals that a couple of years ago, something happened, and nobody got notified either. So I got a phone call at eight o'clock at night, the day after the incident, that there was a threat at the school, and that's unacceptable.
All right, thank you for that.
My name is Tamara, I have, Tamara Delvery, I'm sorry. I have three children at Taylor County, one in primary school, one at the elementary school, one at the high school. I want to reiterate what Yanelys had said about the event, the event on Wednesday. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous, a lot of people here. Back in 2019, I had a child in primary and a child in elementary school. In that instance, we had a similar threat. Children were evacuated from the schools. However, Taylor County, their emergency system didn't dial out long-distance numbers. I am the reason why that now dials out long distance. I made a fuss over it. My children were the last two students to be picked up at Taylor County Primary and Taylor County Elementary. As a parent, and at the time, I was a stay-at-home mom, so the, it has guilt-ridden me for years. So when an event like this does happen, for example, last year when the middle school had an event, had, had an issue and, and parents were notified, that's a very real fear and that's a very real concern of mine here at the district. I, literally, I am the reason why now your system dials out long distance. I have a 305 number, and I was not contacted. Secondly, to add to that, I let, I work out in Mayo. I left my office, and prior to, on my newsfeed, WCTV posted the safety location. Prior to, I may, must have gotten down over to the prison, over... Hi. I may just have gotten down to the prison before I got a text message from Taylor County Schools. So not only was I stuck in traffic because there was construction, but there must have been a thirty, forty-minute gap between when I saw it on my newsfeed and I saw people posting on it to when I received the message from Taylor County District Schools. Thankfully, I have family in town, I have friends in town that were able to respond for me and go, you know, give face for my children. But you know who I didn't give face, see face out there? A lot of you people sitting on that board, and a lot of, some of you were inside that church, and I did not see you give face. You know who I saw give face? Ms. Allison, Kaya's mama, can I see your hand? Over here, another parent that brought me my child. You know who I saw? The people that I see every single day, every single day, taking my kids out from the bus route, up at drop-off, up at pickup. Those are the people that I rely on heavily and that are with my child. So I was not aware that this was, you know, a meeting for, for salaries, but rightfully so. I got text messages from my, if it weren't for those, for those teachers that were with my children, I would have been a ball of nerves. Had Ms. McNeil, thank you, Ms. McNeil, I've got Gia, we're on a bus. Ms. Aguilar, I've got Gina, we're on a bus. Those teachers give face for me, and do you know how heartbreaking it is that my child, the high schooler told me, Mom, I didn't call you first because I know you couldn't get to me in time? So the fact that my children rely on all of you for their safety in the hours of eight to three o'clock, that's a very, very big concern for me. The safety location, that should never have been blasted at all. So in the interim that there is, there is rumors and so whatever, it's a bomb threat. So yeah, the time that I was able to clarify that it was just a rumor, there was no real threat, my anxiety was through the roof by the time that I actually hit Taylor County. So to reiterate Yanelys's point, we do need to do something, and all of these teachers here got the backlash on Facebook, got the backlash from parents, but guess who didn't get the backlash? The people who are standing in the church that are supposed to have given face to those parents. So I appreciate all of you teachers showing up to work and taking, you know, not taken care of because you teach my students and, and very well at that. So I appreciate all of you, and I hope that some change comes to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, and thank you all for giving me your time. I am Shelley Blanco, if you do not know. I am a special teacher. I am one of your lovely subs that they asked to go full-time in a classroom. So, New Year's resolutions. What was yours? Did you make any? Did y'all make any? You know what mine was? Mine was not to take work home. You see, I am a special guest teacher, making simple dollars to the amount of hours I work. Take a breath. I decided not to take work home because, one, my husband was tired of sending me work for free, and not be able to be my best self at home, and I wasn't. I was putting work first when I go home. Now, please, let me tell you a little of who I am. I am a Taylor County graduate from the class of 1993. I have two very well-functioning adult children who also graduated from Taylor County High School. I moved for ten years to live in the Keys, got my Montessori degree with children from zero to six years of age. I am good at my job. I have great class management skills and organization skills. I am punctual. I arrive to work twenty to thirty minutes early, and the parking lot is full. It is full of veteran teachers as well, and leave twenty to thirty minutes after I clock out, after clock-out time, because we all have a time, and then we all leave later, and that parking lot is always full. I am everything you want in a classroom, in a school district. I have volunteered in all the schools, all the years my children attended. I witnessed teachers and staff through the years who worked, and the teachers who truly loved their students and their jobs. Teachers who also took work home, work on the weekends, and missed a lot of family time, all to do work for free for their students, work for you. I also witnessed students thriving, wanting to learn, having fun with their peers, all the while, and this is when my children were in school, respecting adults on campus. They knew Ms. Blanco, and they respected me as a mom and as a volunteer. Now, I have, for the third time, become a substitute teacher for this beautiful school district. The first time, I worked at Perry Primary. The second time, I became one to be able to help with the girls soccer at TCMHS, and now I have the pleasure and privilege to teach seventh-grade math for the second year. I am an effective substitute teacher, and darn right, check my data, because my last year data was pretty good. We all like data. I am effective because of your veteran teachers. The teachers who take home that extra work without pay. The teachers that share their lesson plans with me and make sure that I am doing all I need to be doing. The teachers that take their time from themselves to make sure that I am okay so the students are okay, because that is our number-one priority. They are doing two or more jobs in itself. They and we are doing phone calls to parents way after school hours, pulling off on the side of the road so I don't lose them, to make plans for these students and their parents, receiving emails all hours of the day and nights from parents. We never stop, never. The jacket never goes off. Yes, we are in the world where no one wants to work, but we want to work. We are here. We need you to take knowledge and see it. We go to work every day knowing we will be in middle school, I don't know about elementary, we will be cursed at, yelled at, and to be threatened, and sometimes to be scared at our job. Have you guys ever experienced a lockdown? It is scary as I'll get out. I invite you to look at the lockdown schedule and come join us, please. It is scary. It's nerve-wracking. Appreciate us. No, you have amazing people at your schools, and it could be worse. Yes, teachers are selfless. Yes, sir. I'm almost done. Yes, they think of everyone else before they think of themselves. Last Wednesday proved that with flying colors. Did you come and help with a mob of scared parents? Did you come and try to diffuse and calm them? Or were you glued on your phones watching the show go down? And I'm not trying to be ugly. I'm expecting my first grandchild, and guess what my first reaction was? My first thought? When is the due date? Am I going to be able to get off work, or do I have to quit? That's gut-wrenching. Would you want that for your adult child? Would you want that for yourself? My husband and I have been entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs for thirty years. We have never asked one of our employees to take on a cabinet, finish on your time, and bring it back tomorrow. These teachers have gotten their degrees, put in many, many hours of continuous education to ensure they are prepared to teach these lovely babies in our county. They are prepared. Are you prepared to pay them what they deserve?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to look this way. That makes me too nervous. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Ammon. For those of you that don't know me, I'm also a member of TEA, and I've been teaching here in Taylor County since 2006. And to save you guys from doing the math, that's eighteen years, it's my eighteenth year in the district. So I am an instructional math coach at Taylor County Middle School as well as a sixth-grade math teacher. During the 2014-15 school year, I was honored to be named Perry Primary's Teacher of the Year, as well as represent our district as District Teacher of the Year. And again, last year, I was also awarded the distinguished honor of Taylor County Middle Schools Teacher of the Year. So I stand here before you today to advocate for the veteran teachers here in Taylor County. Let me tell you something about teachers. We're creative, and we're resilient, and at the end of the day, we know we must show up for our students. If we don't show up, who will? Our administration, with the support of our veteran teachers, have had to think outside the box to be able to fill positions to ensure that your child is receiving the best education possible. We have teachers giving up their planning periods to teach extra classes. We have teachers taking on extra preps to ensure that the students in our school are learning. With numerous open positions in our district, we have some amazing people who have stepped up to become guest teachers. Hats off to those of you, y'all are our everyday heroes coming in and doing what you do. And they're willing to step into the trenches with us. Yet, with these open positions and fabulous guest teachers, there comes a network of support that falls on the veteran teachers and instructional coaches. As an instructional coach and a mentor to two new teachers, the level of support that these guest teachers and newer teachers need is tremendous. Just like teachers who must differentiate instruction, leadership also has to differentiate the needs to the needs of our teachers. Just to name a few examples of what we've had to create daily and weekly. We've created daily and weekly must-do lists and task lists. We provided extensive support for new and guest teachers through classroom management, lesson planning, breakdown of a class block, instructional pedagogy, and differentiated instruction, just to name a few, all the while taking on extra students...
All the while, taking on extra students to ensure that students are being educated. Our veteran teachers are utilizing their planning to help support the planning of new and guest teachers throughout their training. All of this is above and beyond the new teacher training program. So, what's the difference between these new and these veteran teachers? What do you guys think? Webster's Dictionary defines experience as practical contact and observation of facts or events that you can encounter or undergo, an event or an occurrence. There's a saying that, there's a saying that goes, nothing can prepare you for your first year of teaching. As lifelong learners, teachers hone and perfect their craft through experience day after day, year after year. There are days in my first year teaching, I thought, oh my gosh, what am I doing? And if it wasn't for the support of my veteran teachers that supported me, I wouldn't have grown into the teacher that I am today. So, did you know that it's estimated that 44% of teachers quit within the first five years of beginning the profession? According to one study, newer teachers are two and a half times more likely to quit than those who are tenured. We've seen a mass exodus of teachers over the last few years and the bottom line always comes back to, they can make more money somewhere else. For those of you that might not be, for those of you, oh, so, for those of you that might not be familiar with the law of supply and demand, when supply is low and demand is high, what happens to prices? They go up. So, right now, the board is asking for new teachers to receive an increase in pay of $2,450 plus performance pay of $1,172. As a veteran teacher with 18 years of experience, my increase in pay this year will only be $937.50. This doesn't even cover the insurance and, the increase in my insurance premiums. So, my paycheck goes down this year. Which means, I'm working for less money than I made last year. Plus, veteran teachers have the added responsibility to mentor and impart our experienced wisdom on new teachers. Are we increasing the pay of veteran teachers to reflect this increased demand? There isn't a teacher shortage, there's a shortage of people who are willing to put up with less. And as a veteran teacher, we're asking you as our board, when we go to negotiations, for a proposal that meets the needs of all teachers, including those with longevity. Thank you.
Thank you. Let, 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 let's try to honor the three minutes where we can get this meeting.
I don't have anything prepared, I'm just gonna mostly fumble over my words. Um, I have two girls in school, the public school system. Amelia, who's here with me today, she's in 5th grade. And one, Fiona, that's in 2nd grade. Since my girls have been in school, they have lost five of their previous teachers. Five. All due to compensation and just support in general. And I would like to add that they weren't just five teachers, they were five incredible teachers. Incredible teachers that upcoming students are not gonna get to experience. And it is heartbreaking, it's heartbreaking for them. I mean, they hate to see their teachers, they don't see their teachers in the school anymore. I, we are actively searching for other alternatives for schools for our girls because we're worried. I'm worried about the quality of our public school system. As we should be. Teachers are leaving because they don't feel supported. They don't feel supported financially, they don't feel supported at all. And I want to support our Taylor, I love Taylor County. I love Taylor County, I've lived here my entire life. I want my girls to go to the Taylor County Public School. I want them to. I, they need to. But I will move them if I have to. And you guys need to make your teachers, you need to make them want to be here. You need to give them a reason to stay, you need to give us as parents a reason to stay.
Thank you. Just talk loud, just talk loud.
Okay. Um, I'm Amelia Laval and I go to 5th grade, I'm in elementary. And I would just like to give a round of applause to all the teachers. They are amazing. Like my mom said, I'm also winging it. Um, the teachers work five days a week and they take care of kids. These kids are sometimes annoying. And they deal with them, even though they can be total bullies. Um, they also do other stuff like grade our papers and they just plan out the day. And I just wanna say thank you. I don't really have anything else, I just wanted to.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Uh, my name is Casey Castle. For those that don't know me, um, I am a small business owner, I'm a parent. And as of this year, I'm a first-time substitute teacher. I sub for Taylor County Primary School and Taylor County Elementary School. First and foremost, I love our schools. And I, I'm kinda going off what Laurel just said. I am a huge advocate for our schools. I'm a huge advocate for our teachers. They put so much of their blood, their sweat, their love, their tears, tears into our children, okay? When I, I have three, three children in our school systems. I have one in the primary school, I have one in elementary and one in middle. My child that is in the elementary school is on the autism spectrum. When she started, um, come, when she started school, she was almost three years old. She was completely non-verbal. Julie Hernandez and Deborah McEwen had my daughter in four months, from January to May, speaking full sentences, telling me her, her wants and needs when I couldn't do it myself at home. If that's not a reflection of how hard these people work for our kids, I don't know what is. And we are losing at a rapid pace our experienced, our wonderful teachers. They are going other places to not teach because they can make the same amount of money. And that's heartbreaking. Because our children are not gonna have these experienced veteran teachers to push them forward, to get them to where they need to be. And to me, that just breaks my heart. And I, I encourage you, Board, please, just stop, pray on it, think about it, think about what we need to do to keep our teachers in Taylor County. I do not wanna see next year, 10 more teachers quit like they did in previous years. They shouldn't be doing that. They shouldn't be leaving. There's something wrong with our system that all of these teachers are leaving. I'm gonna say, God bless Taylor County, God bless our teachers, God bless you, Board, for listening. Thank you so much. Longevity matters, God bless you, thank you everybody.
Thank you.
My name is Renee White. I'm a teacher at Taylor County High School and today I blacked out because my students deserve better than this. I was raised in Taylor County and educated in this district. I received multiple full-ride academic scholarships to the University of Florida, where I graduated with a bachelor's degree in English. And I returned to teach in this district because I was and am sick of the belief some people hold that Taylor County students don't stand a chance because we're a rural district and an economically disadvantaged county. I am more than a statistic and my students are more than a statistic. Students in this district are being deprived of highly qualified educators. They are being deprived of the benefits of well-rested, properly-prepared educators. They are being deprived even of substitute teachers when their normal teachers are out. The students of Taylor County are just as smart, just as talented and just as deserving as students anywhere else, so why aren't they getting the education they deserve? The blame lies with the adults who have the power to change things and stubbornly choose not to. To put it simply, it is your fault that my students are suffering. Taylor County cannot recruit and retain educators. Teaching positions are being filled by long-term substitutes because no one wants to work here. We're abused, we're poorly compensated, and the only teachers who stay here are those who love this community as much as I do. Taylor County is 66th in teacher salary of all the public schools of Florida. If you care about the students of this county, you must make competitive pay and compensation a priority. I could go on all night with a list of complaints, my planning time is randomly taken away with no notice, I work 60-hour weeks with no additional compensation. The union tries to set bargaining meetings to discuss pay raises and working conditions, only for those meetings to be canceled by the district again and again and again. It's January and the Taylor County School District has spent all school year refusing to bargain in good faith, instead basically telling us to take it or leave it. Well, in case you haven't noticed, educators are leaving it. Taylor County is facing a teacher shortage that has reached crisis level. When teachers call out sick, our students are sent to the gym and we're told this is because we don't have substitute teachers in the district. We don't have substitute teachers available because the teaching positions are being filled by the district's substitute teachers. We love you guys and you do a great job, but it's not your responsibility to single-handedly fix the teacher shortage in this county. I'm used to being abused by this district, I've worked here a long time. Frankly, I chose this. I knew what I was getting into when I accepted this job, but my students, the children of Taylor County, deserve better. They deserve highly-qualified educators who have enough planning time to tailor their teaching to student needs. They deserve to have substitute teachers when their teachers are out sick. They deserve better and you have the power to change this situation. Fair competitive compensation would attract educators to our district and help ensure that the educators here can afford to stay here. Taylor County needs to put their money where their mouth is. If you believe our students deserve the best, pay the best. Make our district a district that attracts the best educators from around the state. Provide a quality education to the children of Taylor County, they deserve it.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, I'm super nervous. Um, let me start by saying, as a parent of one of your, last year's 3rd grade students that started his year in total defeat, he was on the bottom of everything. And it was your teachers, your teachers that pulled him to what he is today and he is now an AB Honorable Student. Your teachers are doing their job. It's your turn to do yours. They back and support our students 110% and I'm asking you guys to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, there's a lot of people in here. My name's Destiny Lyle. I graduated in 2015. There's a lot of people in this room that probably know me, have taught me some. Courtney Bethay is one of the only reasons I graduated high school. So, I'm not, in no way, shape or form, one to bite my tongue. I have a eight-year-old who's a foster child. I have a three-year-old who's non-verbal. Excuse me. Taylor County was not my first choice for her school. Gretchen's offers a full-ride and my stepdad works there. He actually left Taylor County School to go to Gretchen's. Gretchen's offers so much more for these kids than y'all do. Y'all are the board that chose to have these classes as inclusive, to integrate our children with these teachers and aides. But at this point, 18 is not the number that they have. They have 19 and 20 and 21. And if worst come to worst Wednesday, these are the people that would have been locked in bathrooms with our kids, these are the people who would have, worst come to worst, shooter, bomb, whatever, that, that too is gonna be locked up with our children, not y'all. So, public matters, all of y'all's salary is Google, right on your phone. Y'all's salary makes up one of their salaries and an aide. So, as a parent, it kinda concerns me when I'm asking multiple, multiple school board members who are outside of that church, what is the safety plan for our exceptional students? What is the safety plan for ESC? My daughter is non-verbal, I am her literal and physical voice. Nobody, nobody at that church, not the police, not school board, not ESC coordinator, phone glued to her face the whole time, nobody can answer me. As to what the plan was, where my child was, what extra care was being taken with students who have special needs? Because y'all are the board that decided to integrate those students. These teachers are not equipped with what they need. They would have been shoved in a bathroom with 21 students, five to seven of them having special needs. Do not physically talk. So, what sense, as an adult and an educator, does your safety plan make when your superintendent gets on the microphone and says it hasn't been changed in 10 years? What reassurance does that give your parents? These are the people that we text to check on our students. These are the people that are every day, they do the certifications, they stay up to date. They know what our kids eat when they're, don't eat regular food. When the food y'all provide isn't good enough for our kids, this is the, my, my daughter's teacher texts me, calls me, if my dau- daughter lets her close that school, she will not put her on a bus wet. She calls me, I will change her plans and come get her. But I called the school board the day after, Thursday at 8:30 and the head of the special education was not there to answer any questions. I got transferred and transferred and transferred. And then I got a call back. And at that point, it's not effective and it doesn't make us as parents want to continue putting our children in school when no one has answers. The sheer lack of accountability of the board, much less the, the teachers, they have 21 students. What are they supposed to do in the middle of chaos with 21 students when y'all don't have a plan? It's, it's just, there's no accountability. The whole situation was not their fault whatsoever, there was nothing that, they could have, like she said earlier, they're the ones that caught the backlash. I'm one of those parents that get on Facebook, I'm one of those that complain. I will not be pushed around about my children. There are other options. There are no, no physical reasons that they should not be compensated for what they're doing. They're there every day. My child's teacher is almost never off, two of her children attend school here and I make more money than they do. And I don't even have my child five days a week, they have her. So, they're required to make sure she goes to speech. They're required to make sure that if she's not eating, if she's not drinking, they relay those messages, y'all do not compensate them what, for what they do. It's not just a teacher job. They, they sign up to teach, that's what their job position is and what y'all delegate them to do is not the only thing that they're required to do. There comes so much more, especially when you're overwhelmed with students and the board does not compensate you for that. One aide does not help with 10, 15 extra students.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just say, wow. I'm Joey Sessions, born and raised here, went to Taylor County School District all my life. I have three grandchildren in the Taylor County School District right now. At the primary school, the middle school and the high school. I'm appalled at what I'm hearing tonight. I mean, God, y'all, y'all are awesome. Y'all are just absolutely awesome. And I thank y'all from the bottom of my heart for everything that you do for these children. I've worked with y'all, I've, I've worked in the school system as well. And huh, let me tell you, I know what y'all face, been there, done that. You should be compensated for what you have to deal with. You should be compensated very well for what you have to deal with in this community and with these children. Some of y'all even taught my children, my adult children, you know? Went to school with them, I mean, y'all deserve so much better. And it just blows my mind that we have teachers leaving this district because our school board won't stand up and take care of them. That's sad. That's just sad, in my, in my opinion. It's just my opinion, but that's sad. We need to do better by our teachers. We need to do better by everybody in this room, our students. My grandchildren deserve the best education they can get. And if I come to the point that I don't think they're getting it here, I'll be like Laurel. I'll make sure they go somewhere they can get it. And never in a million years would I have ever thought that I'd said that about Taylor County School District. But I mean that. Y'all have got to do better by these teachers, by your children. Y'all have all had children grow up in this, this school district, every single one of you, you know? Y'all need to think long and hard and pray about what you're doing to your employees and the children of this community.
Alright, thank you. Oh, you gotta speak, you gotta speak loud if you don't.
I can speak loud. Um, as a parent here, I have three kids in the school system, very intelligent, very high IQ. Daughter, she's a senior. She's got a choice of, a career choice coming up, what she wants to do. High students. Going to give spend, close $100,000 on a new teacher. Um, do you think a teacher? Why would you, it's only $100,000, more than fast food right there. One of the lowest-paid districts in the state. Why would she, why would she choose? Why would I encourage her to go into this profession? Husband of a teacher. Making these teachers leave, I'm one of those reasons that's making her wife to leave this district. I want to take her somewhere else and I have her here, to take her somewhere else where she will be rewarded for what she, what she does and what she brings to the table. So, as a parent, so that's my question for you. How? With the pay that you're paying them, what is your plan and quite frankly, do you even care? After several rounds of negotiations and several months of these, of the time?
Thank you.
I'm Heather Carson. I teach at Taylor County Primary School. My mom taught in this district for 36 years and begged me not to be a teacher. And I said, no, I'm going to do it. And she said, I will not pay for it. And I said, well, I got a full scholarship and here we are. Should have listened. According to a CBS News article with data from a recent analysis of government statistics, the typical American household must spend an additional $11,400 annually just to maintain the same standard of living they enjoyed in January of 2021, right before inflation soared to 40-year highs. Many of us teachers were already working second jobs then to ensure that we could have a cushion in our budget. Cause this job wasn't cutting it then. But now, many of us have to have a second or even third job just to ensure that our bills are able to be paid. There are teachers in our district who have had to make the decision between keeping health insurance for their families or giving it up and keeping their home. Being able to pay their mortgage and pay the district's insurance premiums has become impossible for many of them. And when a mom of three children tells me that, it makes me want to cry. There are teachers in our district who have had to make the decision between, um, to have, made the decision to give up time with their very young children in the afternoons to do the after-school tutoring programs, just to be able to afford the price rise in childcare at our district's own preschool. We have teachers in our district with children that need expensive medical equipment that the district's health insurance doesn't cover and they cannot afford the thousands of dollars out of pocket for it, even though it is a need for them to have an everyday life. We have teachers in our district who are single moms, working multiple jobs, spending long hours away from their children when they're the only parent. And even with those extra jobs, they are still struggling to provide for them. We have teachers in our district who have taught for more than 10 years, but the amount that they bring home annually now is only a few hundred dollars more than the amount they brought home annually when their careers first began because the cost of our district's health insurance has risen at a far greater rate than our salaries have. Many of those teachers I just spoke about are right here in this room, asking for better pay that reflects the rise in the cost of living. Asking for better pay so that they can pay their bills, afford groceries and afford healthcare, all basic needs. People constantly bring up that teaching is a calling and yes, it is. I felt called to do it. But it's also a job, a job that should be adequately compensated just like any other job. Because no calling should ever supersede providing for your family. And just like any other job, the pay for this job should reflect the years of service put into it. Teachers with a decade or more of time with our district should not be making a minimal amount more than the salary of a beginning teacher. We were called to teach, but now we are calling on you to find to make it better. Make it better for our teachers.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? We've heard many, many thoughts this evening. And certainly, we do it with courtesy and take it to heart. Some of these parents who came forward that's had some issues. If you haven't, if you haven't contacted the superintendent's office, I encourage you to talk to, contact superintendent's office about the issues. Okay, and, uh, but that, that's, that's the start right there. And I mean, I apologize for whatever it may be and certainly we want to have the very best school district that we can. And I know we have different avenues of trying maybe to get there, but hopefully we can get there some way. But we want our schools to be safe. And maybe some of this has happened in the last few days. We need to look deeper in and find out if there's something more that we can do, better that we can do for such. But with that said, I appreciate you all coming and sharing. You have the right to do that. And we appreciate what you have spoken to us tonight. It's come from your heart. I know it did. And many times I've heard you all say, pray about it. And I would go along with that and for all of us to pray that we can move forward together and work together for the very best of our district. Is there anyone else who would like to speak before we move on?
G'day, how are y'all?
Fine.
My name is Letty Blanco and I am actually more of a black and white individual. I'm all about business and time is money. Time is money. Your time is worth it. Their time is worth it. I have five kids, all from Taylor County High School. I have two elders. I have an entrepreneur who's in the Carolinas right now. I have a vet that's home having to weld, learned in your school system so we could pay our bills because most of our community, the other party is unemployed. You guys have the responsibility to provide the funding necessary and benefits so that these group of educators can teach our children. I have a sophomore. She'll be graduating from your school system. I've never walked into the school system and dealt with a principal, a teacher, a counselor that didn't know, hey, Ms. Letty's in the office, we need to talk to her. Here I am talking to you and as I sit here, the last time I was in this board meeting, Mr. Howard was sitting there. So it's, it's been a long time. This is important. We are a small, little, tiny community. 20 miles south of us is Lafayette County, top-notch, top-notch. This is embarrassing and humiliating. We deserve better. You guys deserve better too. I'm not going to take credit where credit is, I'm not going to not give you guys credit. I think everybody has a problem. When there's a problem, we need solutions. I don't want to hear complaints. I don't want to hear excuses. From what I heard from the few people that spoke, we've been canceling meetings with unions for the last 12 months. Now, I don't know if that's to be true or not, but we shouldn't be canceling anything. This is a table. This is a forum that we have to come to talk. So if you don't want these parents on Facebook just destroying what's left of our little county, y'all need to work together and come up with a plan that's going to assist, assist the long-term educators, assist the new people that are having to step up because you need the help. This is not going to be done with one person, but I'll tell you what, I lost my job after 17 years and I'm okay flipping burgers if that's what I need to do. So are they, but they shouldn't have to be worrying about where their next pay is coming from. So work on it. This is strictly business. Their testimony has been all emotional. I'm not emotional when it comes to money. There's two things that don't lie. That's God and numbers. Do your math.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, do your math.
Okay. Again, thank you for the remarks and we'll.
Danny, real quick, um, real quick, cause I don't know who's all going to stay as we proceed with our board meeting. I just want to again thank everyone that came out tonight. And the only reason why I'm in this seating is because I know sometime people leave out, out the public comments. I most especially want to thank this young lady that, um, this student that came up here. Sweet, I hope to see you up here one day. I know many of you have expressed your concerns and I know when we say this, I know many of you think it's just words. But I've been sitting on this board for seven years and I came up here with two senior board members and three of us came together. And I know since day one, since it became this board, that we have worked hard every year when it comes to negotiations. Now, as Ms. Blanco said, numbers don't lie and God don't either. And she pointed out also that we're a small community. But what put me up here is what another parent said, because when my kids got in school, I became very concerned as to whether I would keep my kids in Taylor County. I did move my kids for two years and when I went to other districts, I seen the very same thing here. Now, when I decided to become a school board member, I engaged the process. I not only engaged it as a parent, but I engaged it as a constituent and then now that I'm up here. So I would ask that everyone in this room, if this is something that you guys are really wanting, this would take more than just the six of us up here. This is a community issue. I, back in 2018, filed a board agenda item because that's when the governor first said that he wanted to see the raises to, I meant teachers' pay to go up. And when he highlighted for it started teachers, the beginning salary, we as a board, as well as the whole state, knew that it was going to separate new teachers and veterans' teachers. I filed an agenda item. We didn't have this type of turnout. And with me doing that was, so we as a community say, what could we do to figure out? How could we pay our teachers more and not just our teachers? As Ms. Charlotte and as Ms., um, I can't, Ms. Fairclough said, we have, you know, numbers of employees and we knew that our people was not getting paid what they needed to be paid. We're not, one of the lowest districts in the state afforded that pay. I know we're not compared to some of these higher counties, but we're not the lowest. And I know that's not what you want to hear, but I know over the years we have made, made, made changes. But this is a community issue. This is something that would takes a lot of work for us as a community to be able to change. There's a lot of variables that are in the play and I just ask you guys to, like I say, make sure you engage the process so you would know what all goes into it and know that the work we're doing here to try to improve this. We know year after year how hard it gets and we don't like to see that. But yeah, we the ones that you guys elected, so we're the ones tasked and I'm not saying that we're not the ones to do the job. But I do want you guys to keep that in mind, you know, as we continue to move forward, that we are working hard. We're looking at the numbers. We're looking at every solution possible to raise teachers' pay. So I just wanted to just state that because again, this is something I've been passionate about since I've been sitting up here. And I know the board members have too, because this is something we test with every year and this is something that's getting harder and harder. I know that's not what you want to hear, but again, that is where we're at and again, we don't take this lightly. I have two jobs myself. I have two kids in the system. My salary is not what was stated, but again, I didn't sign up for the money. I signed up because I wanted my kids to live in a community that will have a top school district. I don't believe just because you're a small county that you should have to have a lesser education. When I look at a neighboring county that has always been an A district. But I know that those community, it's been a community effort. It hasn't not just been tasked with the school district. A lot of times stuff are just tasked with the school district and I'm including teachers and staff with it. So I'm saying as community members, you guys that live here, you guys that want it, you gotta make sure that it's a community effort and that we work together because that's how we will move forward. This has to be a community effort. The school district will not be able to do this on our own. We need our community to be engaged as it was tonight for us to get us where we need to go. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, thank you, Ms. Darnell.
All the stuff that you said, like you say, like you care, but like actions matter more than words. You say that you want like a good, uh, you want like a good district. Like you say that you take these words to heart, but like actions, guys. Like you say that like, if you want like, you want to fix a problem, talk to the superintendent's office. Well, these teacher, these parents, they did, they called and they called and they called, but they just got shoved off to the side. Like, like I'm like, I'm an honor student, like I've seen all these teachers, like without these teachers, I wouldn't be an honor student. Like, and it all comes down to, we deserve better. Like, my teachers deserve better.
Okay, thank you.
Actions matter more than words.
Alright, thank you. Okay, we're, we're going to move on then. Uh, one, one more, come on down.
Hello, everyone. I am kind of terrified to be up here because I like to plan things and didn't plan this. But, um, I am an honor student, was able to begin college at 14, thanks to the extra effort put in by teachers, put in my teachers' effort outside of what they were required to do, for the way that they pushed me beyond the minimum of what they are being paid. And I want us to, I'm taking an economics class right now. One part of economics is what is a commodity, a valuable resource, right? To take a commodity from someone without compensation, that's stealing, correct? We think of stealing as immoral, don't we? To be taking time and effort out of these teachers' days with the amount of work that they're taking home, with the amount of stress that's put on them that they have to carry then into the rest of their day, into the rest of their life, beyond what they're being paid for. And not compensate is to take commodity without compensation. That is stealing, that is thievery and it is wrong. As one of a student here, I'd stand on the shoulders of giants and they can't stand without action from everyone else. They can't stand without action from the board themselves. And to put the responsibility of something on the community, whenever it's not the community's responsibility, they're volunteering. They're giving of themselves to be here whenever they don't have to be here. They didn't sign up for a job to support teachers, but they're here anyways. It's the people that signed up for the job to support teachers that should be supporting teachers. They've, they're doing what they've been asked. They're giving you guys the munition. They're giving you guys the cannonballs. It's on you to pull the trigger, not them. They're doing all that they can. This is what we can. We're exercising our rights to be here. It's not their responsibility. The cannon is in your hands.
Thank you. Alright, again, again, thank you all for coming and sharing with the board tonight and.
Mr. Letty, I have a question.
Yes.
Ms. Ball, can you tell us the comments that have been made that we've rejected, there's been several proposals that have been rejected? Can you give us a timeline of what's actually gone in our bargaining? I, I would like everyone to hear this.
We, we have met in negotiations several times, starting in May. We had a very focused meeting right after the storm, I think the day of or the day after, just on a singular issue. We've been back and forth. There was a first written proposal from the union on December 11th. We met again on January the 8th and the district responded to each item in the union proposal. The district has met each and every time in good faith, as this young lady says, bargaining is a verb. It is a verb and it continues. We have a session tomorrow with the instructional group and the non-instructional group on February the 13th. The district has always promoted paying teachers as much money is available, but you have to understand that the board is also the fiscal agent of this district. Everyone in this room would agree, we've had very cataclysmic financial episodes in this county. this county this year between the storm and the mill closing. There are financial issues that the board has had to address. One thing that came of the union proposal that I think everyone needs to understand, and someone made the point that numbers don't lie, Ms. Blanco, I believe, God doesn't lie and in my world, facts don't lie. The fact of the matter is that the union has made a proposal that is contrary to Florida law and we've pointed that out since the district made the first salary proposal on October the 31st. So, there has not been a continual rejection and shoving a proposal down the union and down the teachers' throats. We've been back and forth and negotiating in good faith. And I know having done this for almost 30 years, the board always negotiates in good faith. So, we don't have an agreement. Hopefully, we are closing in on an agreement. But I can tell you, as I told the representatives that were at the meeting on October 31st, it will never be my advice as the attorney for this board, that this board submit a salary proposal that is unlawful. We have performance pay here, as everyone knows. Unfortunately, that seems to affect the veteran teachers disproportionately, but you need to take a group like this to the legislature and speak to them because the legislature is the body that created this beginning teacher salary model that this district has tried to comply with and comport with. And that is what one, one of the young ladies up here spoke to about the dollars that are in the salary proposal. Yes, the beginning teacher proposal is a greater amount because those are state dollars that come down and that is the goal of the legislature. And the other monies have to come from this fiscal body here. This, this body has only a certain number of dollars, just like we all have a certain number of dollars to pay our light bills and our house payments. So, everyone on this board has always advised me as the negotiator, I'm the messenger between the two groups, that's my role. They have always advised me and with Ms. Valentine's input as to the dollars available, to take all the dollars available to the table. So, we're not holding anything back. Nobody is hiding the ball. But facts matter. As to the canceling of meetings, that is absolutely incorrect. One person stood up here and said, "We've canceled a bunch of meetings" and by three persons later, that, that fact had taken growth and everyone in this room was rah-rahing. That is not the case. I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
No ma'am.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking.
Ma'am.
I'm speaking. I'm speaking, ma'am. Just let me finish. I sat here and listened to everybody very patiently.
Or she can get in line.
So, yes, we are meeting tomorrow, as I said.
Instruction.
I said instructional and non-instructional on February the 13th, okay?
Yes, she did.
Well, then I stand corrected.
She did.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. So, to close, we're gonna meet in closed session tonight, in executive session, as we always do during this negotiation terms. And we will discuss, I'm sure, all of the comments and concerns that have been raised tonight and when we meet, we will meet tomorrow in good faith and hopefully, we will be further towards a resolution of this. Yes, ma'am?
Did you say that their pay is based on the student's performance?
Performance pay, yes, ma'am.
But you know what? I'm a parent and I wasn't gonna say anything, but I work as a parent and I'm trying to account the primary results. And my thing is, how can you base your pay? I really wasn't going to speak.
But we don't, but we don't do that. The legislature does that. We don't determine that.
I retired from the prison. I've made $46,000 a year. When I hear how much these teachers make, it says to me, you got an 18-year-old walking into a prison, making $50,000 a year the first year, and they deal with the same thing that the school system deal with. When I walked into the school, my first week at the school, I was like, whoa. I had a flashback, because I saw a student hitting a teacher and using profanity towards the teachers. It was like a flashback for me. Seriously, it was, in his primary age. And it sad to me when I hear the teacher say the amount they make, because simple reason is, I watched them cuddle kids, love kids, purchase food for those same kids. Christmas time, there was families that didn't have anything, had nothing to do with the school system. The teachers willingly bought stuff for kids that was not gonna get anything for Christmas. And that's really sad to see that they make what they make. I feel sorry for them. I couldn't have lived off what they're making and have all the things that I have and desire. And I'm serious about that. You got an 18-year-old walking in with no degree and there's no difference in the school system than the prison system. I did 26 years at this prison and I'm second year at the school and there's no difference to me. And then you say that their pay is based off their performance? How can it be when I can't even get the parents to send the kids to school? And I call that number and I call that number and I never get an answer. And then on top of that, I aggravate my principal, my vice principal, what can we do? Today, I'm in her office. What can we do? Teachers aggravated me. Ms. Moss, they won't come to school. Well, I'm supposed to go to their house and get them dressed? I'm serious. I was not going to say anything, but it's not the teachers' fault. I'm serious. I'm in. I have to complain about the school system, but baby, I'll take the prison any day to the school teacher.
All right.
I'm serious. I'm serious.
But you're talking about two different issues here.
Yeah. You said, she said the performance.
Right, because we don't determine that and teachers know this.
It's the legislator. It's the legislator.
By the data of the school, correct?
We don't determine that. The school does not determine that, ma'am.
But I'm saying, it's by the data. Do you mean that it's the performance that's by the data they get paid, raised?
No, no. That's, that system was set up by legislator. It wasn't set up locally.
Yes.
Well, okay, what do we do when the kids does not come to school? What do we do to make the cost go up?
We don't have enough hours in the night to answer that one. We don't have enough hours in the night to answer that one.
All right, thank you, but we, we got to move on, sir. You've had your turn. Thank you. You've had your turn. All right, we're gonna move on now with the agenda this evening. We do need to take care of all the other items. You're free to go if you want to or you can stay. But the, on the agenda, the consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. So, this brings us down to item 12.17, which is, we have a couple of terminations here. Item number one is termination of employee, or of employment for employee position 0141 51130.
Motion?
All right, motion's been made. Do we have a second? Ms. Agner seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, item number two, termination of employment for employee in position of number All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion.
Second.
All right, Ms. Mathis seconds that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Brings us down to item 15.01 and this is to approve the policy and authorization to advertise for a public hearing, district approval of redistricting map.
Motion.
All right, Ms. Carlton makes that motion.
Bonnie Sue.
Okay, Ms. Agner seconds it. Any discussion on this?
Mr. Lundey, may I comment on this point?
Ma'am.
May I comment on this, please?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, um, the district, the board is going to have to approve a resolution, which I have drafted. The issue is that there has to be a meets and bounds or a legal description of the districts. So, the resolution is prepared. I'll be bringing that back hopefully next time. I've reached out to Mr. Bishop, because Mr. Dudley was working with the county, as you all know, as to the map. So, I believe Mr. Bishop was gonna go to him and have him update the actual wording of the descriptions. So, that will have to be contained in your resolution. So, tonight, as far as approving the map is fine, but you will also have to approve a resolution, which will have to be published going forward.
But this, but this authorizes it to go to public hearing, but we have to do that? We advertise it twice?
Yes.
Okay.
And what I'm suggesting to you is, you are gonna still have to do a resolution. So, I didn't want you to think that this was all. We do have to come up with a defined area for each district.
Thank you, Angela.
All right, so, we're good with the motion and second, we'll just get the resolution next time.
Yeah, we'll have to follow up, is all I'm saying.
Okay, all right. Motion's been made, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so carried. Brings us down to items of interest this evening by the superintendent and the board. And Ms. Messures, what do you have, anything this evening?
I have a lot to say. First of all, the bomb threat on Tuesday that we, is it Tuesday? First day we came back, Wednesday. So, gotten a lot of, I asked for some feedback from our staff members and a lot of people have sent me some feedback and I really appreciate that. And I sent out an email and basically, this is it. I mean, we need, we need to practice that more often. We need to be better prepared whenever we have to evacuate students. But I'm gonna stand by this one statement. Adults were inconvenienced. Students were safe. Excuse me?
They inconvenience? For a reason. When you inconvenience, it doesn't matter. That is the fact.
First of all, you're out of turn. Adults were inconvenienced and students were safe. We have had this in place for many years. I've been in this system, I was an educator myself for over 14 years in the classroom. Experienced me the things that we're talking about here tonight. I too took work home. I too felt like I didn't get compensated. I understand that. We had this plan in place. We've never had to do a mass evacuation. Thank God that that's never had to happen. The reason we evacuated was because we were told that the, in normal circumstances, if a school district received a threat, or, you know, usually it would just be one school. It was a nonspecific threat made to multiple schools. We were told that the, gotta make sure I don't say the FDOE, the FLDE, they contacted the FLDE. They said they could not send someone to come down and clear our schools because multiple schools had been threatened. So, at that time, our sheriff advised us to follow protocol, which would be to get the kids off the campuses. It was 40-something degrees, 50 degrees that day and our students could not be out in the weather. So, we evacuated, went by our reunification plan. We did not do a good job of organizing that. That was hard to see. Our teachers were rock stars and our students were amazing. We took very horrible conditions and we made the very best of it. And it wasn't good and we can do better. And you have my word. We had a little briefing today, the directors, the principals and the assistant principals and I met today and we talked about, and I gave them some of the things that, feedback that I've received also on email, and we talked about what we can do better next time and it's gonna be a whole lot better. One of the things that we heard as a, as a criticism was, put all the fish in one barrel. Well, here's why that doesn't make sense. This was a bomb threat and it was sent out to multiple districts. This was not an active shooter. If this would have been an active shooter, it would have been different, wouldn't been announced where the reunification is. Absolutely. We know that. Our only thought at that time was to get our students away from the schools and to be safe and that's what we did. Lots of things to work on organization-wise. Lots of things were not okay. We'll work on those and we'll improve. We've never had to do that again, thank God. All we can do now is learn from that and do better and hope that we never have to do that again. But if we do, it'll be better. Teacher pay, very contentious thing. I know when I was in the classroom, I would have felt exactly the same way. I would have felt very disrespected to think that I had been teaching. This would have been my 24th year in the classroom, I think 24th or 25th. I would feel very disrespected if, if my daughter, I'm looking at Lori Lilly at the back. If my daughter coming in made almost as much as I did, that, I would feel very disrespected. So, I, I truly understand that and I don't think that it's right. There was talk about $7 million in SFR funds. That's not true. There are not $7 million available in SFR funds. That is false. That's fake news. We've brought this district up to, what was it, $12,000 in the last four years in teacher pay? And I get it, it's still not enough. This is all I can say. I was a single mom for very, for a few years and I understand about the work in several jobs. I did that as well too. I've, I've been here and I've done that, so I can, I have some empathy there because I've been through those things as well. There was a Christmas that one of my daughters wanted a toy and it was very expensive. My kid was a good kid. My kid made really good grades. She didn't get in trouble. Couldn't buy the, I couldn't buy it. I wanted her to have it. I thought she deserved it. She absolutely deserved it, but I didn't have the budget. And I had to make a decision between, as Ms. Carson said, taking my kids to the doctor, buying groceries, paying my car payment or getting, or getting this toy. Couldn't do it. Like she got other things, you know? But she wasn't the only child I had to take care of at that time either. So, I had to do with my budget what I could do. So, seems to be some kind of myth that we can just snap our fingers or that we're sitting on these millions of dollars. That is not the case. We've tried to, to offer a fair, what we feel was a fair proposal and it's been rejected and that's fine, I get it. It is bargaining. I saw somebody that's had a sign that said bargaining is a verb and that's great. But we've been advised by our attorney not to accept one of the proposals because it violated the statute. I will not violate the statute. I don't care if other districts are doing it. I won't do it. I have a line and I'm towing the line. We will continue to bargain. We will continue to look at some things. We have a meeting, I believe, tomorrow to come back with some more, is it tomorrow? And we have some other things that we're gonna bring to the table. I appreciate the feedback. I'm not personally offended by the black shirts I wore, black to support teachers because I support teachers. Without teachers, none of us would be sitting up here. Without teachers, I wouldn't sit up here. I'm a first-year college graduate. Both of my parents dropped out of high school and got their GEDs. I'm a product of working from the ground up. Things didn't come easy for me. I didn't come off the streets. I came from the classroom. And I did my time. I taught many of, many people that were sitting here tonight. I've, I've taught some of these young men and women, okay? So, I do know how it feels. I do know how it feels to, to think that you're not appreciated. I do know what it feels like to put in all those extra hours. And I was an English teacher, so let me tell you something. You wanna talk about who has the whole job, hard job, try grading 120 essays every week. I mean, I get it. It's a lot. So, please don't think that your fault, your, your comments are falling on deaf ears. They're not. But we have to be reasonable and we have a budget for a reason. I think that some of this frustration that's being directed at us could perhaps be better directed in higher places. And I think there's a lack of understanding on some, some, some parts that perhaps, and I don't know why that is. I don't know what the, the, the lack of, you know, it's just stand up, give me more, you're putting money where your mouth is. Y'all have budgets at your house. You can't get everything you want for yourself or your kids because you all have budgets. Well, that's how it works here too. We're talking about healthcare tonight. I did a survey of healthcare. I'd be glad to share with everybody here what the healthcare costs are in our surrounding districts. We were very, we were right on it. We were cheaper than most and a little, yes, I'd be glad to give it to you tomorrow, Ms. Carson. I'll send it to you. Send it to everyone. I'll, I'll show you that. We also, the other thing besides the healthcare that was, that was mentioned, you mentioned healthcare, right? Okay. So, I'll, I'll, I make sure, I'll send it to everybody, but I make sure that, you know, you get it. So, healthcare costs were mentioned. That went up all over the state. I'll show you what we've got in our PACE region. What was the other thing that was mentioned besides the healthcare? There was one other thing that went up that we didn't have control over. What was it?
The childcare.
The in-school childcare, yes, ma'am. So, and, and we can talk about this at length later, and I would, I'm already was set to go to Ms., um, Ms. Martino's school to talk about this, but when I took over superintendent, that childcare was, was it four hundred thousand dollars in the red? Okay. So, I'm not personally offended, but I can't go bankrupt either. So, that's a great benefit for our teachers that have small children, and I love it, and I think it's important, and I think that's a, a benefit we have. But, talk about paying our childcare literally four hundred thousand dollars in debt, because it was not being handled, it was mishandled. So, Ms. Ballens worked very hard to get that under control, and we're doing better now, but that's where we were. So, it didn't just start out on, on the, on the top. And when you wanna know why places like Saint John's, or some school in Dallas-Fort Worth area can afford to pay their veteran teachers more, it's because their base was already higher. We're trying to do both. We're trying to raise the base because the argument's been that our veteran teachers are overworked. They have to do so many things for these young teachers. I don't know how to attract new teachers without paying them, right? So it's kind of like a double-edged sword. So their, your workload is gonna continue to be great, and you're gonna continue to have to do everything if there's nobody new to come into the classroom. And how do we attract new people? We gotta get that base up. Again, I know we still have to give our veterans what they deserve, but it's, it's like it's a double-edged sword there. You have to think of both, you have to think of both things. And again, there are only so many dollars in that budget. So, so just take a moment and think about some of those things, to think about, how do I take the load off of you? One of the way I take the load off of you is I make it appealing for new teachers to come in. Um, that doesn't mean that you don't deserve better for longevity. You, you do, you know, you've been here, and you do deserve that. And it is insulting for you to make just a little bit more than your daughter. It's insulting. So we're working, we're working on it. Yes, I agree. I agree. Please know that we're not, we're, we, we value you. And I know you say, put your money where your mouth is. Again, you have budgets at your house, we have budgets up here. Just keep that in mind. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Ball, do you have anything?
I don't have anything else, except we do need an executive session.
Okay, we do need executive session. Okay, Ms. Donnell.
Yes, um, again, like I said, I wanna thank everyone that came here tonight. As the young man reiterated, actions speaks louder than words. So I, um, you guys do have my pledge to make sure that I, as a board member, will continue to raise my voice, and like I say, put the effort into making sure we're looking at the numbers and doing what we can to, um, increase our teachers' pay and to get our veterans' pay, um, get our veterans what they deserve. Um, I also have forwarded, um, an email that I received from a constituent in regards to the incident last week. Um, first and foremost, um, the individual contacted me, and they gave me their, um, feedback as well as their concern, and it was very detailed. So I have, I reached back out to that individual and made sure they knew that their information would be shared with the board, far as me receiving their contact and me asking you guys to make sure you take a look at that email. Um, Alicia, I have CC you on it, 'cause I do think you need to receive it, as well as I, I seen Christie in here earlier, our safety personnel, one of our safety personnel, but I forwarded to say, um, Christie as well. Um, Superintendent, I have received a lot of concerns from, um, Wednesday. Um, I do plan, you know, to us to have the opportunity. I hope we have the opportunity to workshop what took place last week. Um, again, I have kids in this district. My husband is in the newspaper, is one of the first ones in line. Um, so, I was at work. I couldn't have been to the church. If I could have been there, I would have been there. Um, but I couldn't have been there, 'cause I had just started a job, but I was just as concerned as you guys. Um, and I don't think that set me apart or give me any, you know, e- extra credit or anything, but again, that's me as a member of this community doing what I can to get involved. And I, when I say community, I mean us all, you know, stand on top of this, not just what was done here tonight, but us continuing to put every effort that we can. You're right, you're not the ones that's tasked with sitting up here. We are, that's what you elected us to do. But in order for us to do the job that we need to do and are able to do, we gotta have the community involvement, and that goes beyond voting. That goes beyond you guys supporting us during election time. That's, again, you stand on top of us, and that's, again, you engage in the process, and again, doing everything that you can as a community to demand that you want a top school district, and to demand you want top salaries, and to demand you want better for your community, 'cause that how it will happen. Um, if I could go into details tonight, I would, but I can't because of the time. But any, my number is on, um, the district. I know it's on my school Facebook page, um, so if anybody ever wants to reach out to me, my number is there. I'm always available if you wanna reach out and, um, contact me to express any concerns, or, like I say, to get more information, to find out how to engage the process, please do that. I'm not above taking feedback and input, because again, that's what keeps me motivated, and that's what keep me engaged. And whether I'm here or not, I'm of this community, and I've been signed up, and I'm still willing to do the work that needs to be done, and to work with the district and board members to hear concerns and to work as a board to do what we can. So, thank you guys again tonight. Uh, again, I don't want to negate the process. I appreciate you guys coming out. I appreciate the feedback, and I ask that you guys do continue to stay on top of us and, but also work with us to, um, get this district in a better place and to get you guys what you very much deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Agner.
Well, I appreciate everybody coming tonight. Everybody needs to be heard. And that's a two-way...